All right, good evening Nottingham. It is 6:30 so we are going to get our meeting started. If we could start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under our, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, welcome to the Monday, April 21st Board of Selectment meeting. On the agenda, we have moved things around a little bit. We have a presentation at 7 o'clock. And after that presentation, if folks do have more questions for the Department of Transportation, they're going to set up in the kitchen. And so you can go in there and ask them any additional questions you might have. And so we've kind of moved a lot of the regular business for the Board of Selectment until after that appointment, so around 7:30. So move on to the manifests in minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the manifest of 414 and payroll of 415.
A second then?
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve the public minutes of 47 and non-public minutes of 47.
I did have one thing on line 125, which for the not for the public meetings. Right, yes. Where it says, at the end of that line where it says, "Since the town has received two separate legal opinions." I think that is referring to... It's not anything about this paragraph.
What line you on?
Oh, yeah.
125.
125, I think that's in regard to Mendel.
Yes. That was regarding Stevens Hill Road.
Oh, Stevens Hill Road, I'm sorry, yes.
Yeah.
So I don't know if we want to move that to right up onto 117 after Stevens Hill Road, the word Stevens Hill Road?
Yes.
Because it references that.
Yep, that makes sense, all right. I will amend my motion unless anybody's got anything else. All right, I will make the motion to approve the public minutes of 47 with the change of the sentence, "Since the town has received two separate legal opinions, it was felt that holding a public hearing would provide the select board with voter feedback, make the select board's decision transparent." And I guess that second sentence too goes with it. Administrator White will have the attorney send along a letter of opinion. So basically, anything from that ending paragraph starting at 125, moving to after Stevens Hill Road on 117.
The motion to approve the public minutes as amended?
A second then?
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye. All right, and I will make the motion to approve the non-public minutes of 47.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Moving along. Reports from assigned committees and departments?
I can start with the recreation, recreation events over Easton went very well. Cleanup here was well. Got some of the gardens cleaned up and rest of situation out back kind of cleaned up and straightened away. So I think everything's moving along fine with that.
Nothing new on fire department. Planning board met two Wednesdays ago. Since that meeting, Teresa Bascom has tenured her resignation, so we were looking for a new chair and stuff like that and a replacement for her, as well as we still have alternate positions open. Next meeting's Wednesday, this Wednesday.
The master planning committee is meeting next week for our third meeting. Right now, we're developing a survey to put out to the town of Nottingham residents and pulling together a lot of statistics, a lot of information. So after next week, I'll get you updated.
I have no update from the highway other than what Ellen's going to say in her minutes.
From the police department, I think everybody probably knows that Sergeant McNeil got a little banged up last week answering a call to Co. Brown for a reported bomb threat. The vehicle was totaled. And I believe some of the equipment can be salvaged from it. Sergeant McNeil is doing okay, just bumps and bruises, my understanding. The excitement of the week.
All right. Anything else? We could move into our 6:45 appointment. Mr. Danus, if you're ready. It's a little bit early, but...
That's fine.
You don't mind?
No, I don't. Eric Danus, 24 Brussels Road, Nottingham. I came in here, oh, I forget, sometime in the middle of the winter. We live out on, there's a number of us, we have over 40 properties out on between Brussels Road and Tuckaway Shores Road, which are now town roads, that you have to go through Nottingham, have to go through Raymond to get through Mindle Road and Raymond. And that section of Mindle Road is about a half a mile long. And my complaint last time I was in here was, you guys were sanding the Nottingham side really well, but there was no sand or minimal sand coming through on the Raymond section. And so at that time, I was told, well, we're doing minimal maintenance. And so I said, well, jeez, can we at least get some sand in there so that we don't slide on that road trying to get to our road? I've been out there for 38 years or so. The town's been maintaining not only Mindle Road, but, you know, Brussels Road and Tuckaway Shores Road for over 45 years. It seems that like two years ago, you know, we understand that it's, I don't know if it's illegal, I'm not sure the specifics behind it, but you're not supposed to spend town money on other roads, particularly private roads, particularly private roads that aren't in your town. But, you know, the town has been doing a good job of maintaining that for, since, you know, I've been out there 38 years and it's been, you know, 45 years plus that the town's been maintaining it. Well, this, I know that road grader was, we had a really bad year last year. The road grader, I understand, I understood broke down. And the town, I saw that little tractor, that little red tractor that you guys have with the blade on it that, you know, tries to scrape the road down. Well, that does okay, but it doesn't really maintain the roads because you don't crown the roads, you don't, you know, put some dirt in the middle of the roads. Rolling the roads now seems to work a lot better. And always in the past, we've, you know, called up the town and say, hey, this particular section is in really bad shape. Can you just send somebody out to take a look at it and take care of it? Well, I did that. In fact, it was, I think it was on 403, I sent an email to Ellen. And I even sent pictures to Ellen. I said, this is in really bad shape, can you do something about it? Because the road isn't crowned, there was a washout, the rain ran right down the middle of the road and put a six, eight, 10 inch ditch down through the middle of the road. And because it's not crowned, the water puddles up on the flat spots and it gets, you know, pretty deep holes. Well, right now, it's, I don't want to say it's passable, but it's really tough right now to get a car through it without bottoming out. Always in the past, the town of Nottingham has taken care of stuff like that. For the last two years, they haven't. In particular, this year, they haven't. Now, I asked Ellen, who's, you know, is Steve going to come out and take a look at it? I don't know if he ever did. I never saw a truck out there. I never got a report back that said, yeah, he's going to do something with it. So we have a problem here. The last time I was here, we talked about the lawyer, you guys had just hired a new lawyer. And the new lawyer was on board and was notified that this is a problem area where it's a private road in a different town, where the town of Nottingham has agreements with other, with the town of Raymond on other roads where they take care of that road. So I have a, I guess it's a two-part question for you guys, is how come we can't get that road and get the same service that we had in the past? Why can't we get this stuff taken care of? Is the first question. And the second question is, what's the town going to do about it? What can we do about this to settle this? Has the lawyer talked to Raymond? Has the lawyer done anything on it? Is there anything being done on it? I got an email back from Ellen after I, you know, emailed her a number of times. And one of them reads, "The update I received is that the highway crew was to begin grading as soon as the weather conditions allowed. The rain every other day has presented challenges." This was a few weeks ago and delays, but I'm told they're on Ledge Farm Road today. This was back on 409. So they're on Ledge Farm Road on 409. Their initial focus is the main roads. I know you guys always grade the main roads first. And they'll, where they'll add gravel road to surface, apply stabilization, dust control treatment. From there, they'll branch out to the lake roads and they'll start on the west end of the lake first, which is, I believe, our end of the lake, which is the west end. And prioritizing based on assessed needs. So my question is, when is, you know, when's the road crew going to get out there? Well, first off, how come we haven't gotten this issue taken care of, these really two bad spots taken care of? It's not like we're looking for a super highway or anything, we're just looking to get the really hard trouble spots taken care of so that we can pass through them, you know, without bottoming out your car or having damage to your car. And once the, what kind of assessed needs need to be taken care of before we can see the road grader or some sort of crew out there? Anybody want to address that?
Yes, so I guess...
Throw it open together.
Let me start with the first part of your question.
Yeah.
In regards to Raymond and Nottingham plowing Raymond roads, that's a private, we talked about this when you came for the first time, is that that section is a private road.
Right.
So Raymond doesn't even take, won't even take care of it because it's not...
Well, we all understand Raymond doesn't take care of it. Nottingham's been doing it for 45-plus years.
No, I understand, but your question was...
I don't think really we've been doing it for 45-plus years.
Oh, yes, you have.
I think Palmer Heard did it for quite a few years, didn't he?
The town did too.
The town did?
I know they stepped in afterwards because he's passed since, but...
He passed like one year ago.
Yep.
And he only did supplemental part.
And that was an agreement that Palmer Heard had with the town, with the Furnells at the time, so that, so that he'd do some of it. But the town did do it as well.
Yep.
So I think that, I think what we are trying to do is do it the right way. And plowing a private road that isn't even in our town, and what I understand you're saying, we talked about it after that meeting, is that we should continue to maintain that portion of the road as we had before until we can figure out...
That's what we're looking for right now. It's just maintain it as you have before, and that's not happening. You know, it started not happening two years ago. So we used to be able to call up if we had a real problem area like this and, you know, somebody had come out, who was the, Sean was the road crew, road agent before, I think Steve Rollins is.
Right.
And, you know, very responsive. And he'd take care of it. And we don't call because, you know, there's a bump here and there's a bump there. They're dirt roads. We all understand that. We all understand that they're going to be tough in the springtime. But when you get, I'll challenge every one of you people to, Ashley, get in your car...
I did.
And drive out there to Nottingham.
I went out there last weekend.
Me too.
Yeah. So you saw that?
It's concerning, yep.
Okay. So imagine driving that every day if you got to go to work. You know, a five-minute ride takes you 15 minutes.
Yeah. Yeah, it's concerning. I don't want to speak for Ellen, but I know she's been in touch back and forth quite a bit, I believe, with our new lawyer, trying to come up with legal solutions, none of which are easy.
No, it's not going to be easy. We understand that. And in the meantime, just, you know, give us a break and take care of the road, please. You know?
But if somebody brings up and says, hey, the status quo has been wrong and this is borderline illegal, you can't be like, well, we're going to continue to do it because we've been doing it. We have to say, oh, we have to look at this because now somebody has identified it as being a challenge and so far, the lawyer doesn't agree with you. So that's where we're at. We have to figure this out. So we can't just be like, sure, half a mile, let's just, let's keep doing what we're not supposed to do. And then other people will be like, how much is this costing us on a private road out of town? I understand, and we have to come up with something. And we have an email with several options which are not easy, so...
Yeah, but I thought, my understanding was that after that meeting, the board agreed to maintain it until we figured out a solution to not maintain it.
I don't, I don't fully remember, and if we did, I don't know where it is. So where it's been at.
That was the agreement, but this is, this is where the difference comes in. To the level of what it had been maintained is what it was being maintained under Steve Rollins versus what he's referring to based on the quality of what Sean McLean was maintaining. So we have, we have a transition between the person holding that position and the quality. So by us advising that we should continue the maintenance, it's, to the continued maintenance that it's been done for the past two years. So I think what Mr. Danus is looking for is what it was prior to two years ago.
But I think without communication, this is what we talked about, is that you just make a change and don't let the residents know that, hey, this is why we're not going to be doing this anymore. We need to come up with it. I, in my mind, that seems like the way it should have been done, rather than just changing it, which I understand Mr. Rollins' point, and, but I don't know. That's my opinion.
I do too, and I think ultimately, your safety, it's not just about bottoming out, but it's about safety and being able to get vehicles in there if you had a fire or an emergency of some sort.
Or the other way, the emergency to you guys.
Yeah, that's what I mean, yeah, sorry. And that's what's most concerning to me. I mean, we all know we live on dirt roads, it's a pain. But I think that's a concern. But it is dicey in terms of the law. And it was suggested to me as well that if a petition was taken out, taken up, and if the abutters in Raymond would all declare, you know, they would assume no liability, that anything could be done, that perhaps Raymond could pick this up. But it doesn't really sound like that from our lawyer. But I would like to see at least it maintained the way it happened.
Because it is.
So would we, that's the whole problem right here.
Something's got to be done.
Something's got to be done.
Yeah, it's dicey.
Graded a couple of times a year.
Yeah.
Which is the normal...
It's just, yeah, it's twice a year, grade it, put a crown on the road, don't just grade it flat.
So what I'm saying though is, we need to figure out in the long term a solution.
Right, right.
That's my, my point. In the short term, I think we just, we need to get that road approved for you.
Two issues, fix it, you know, at least close to what you have in the past, and let's get a solution together.
Right.
All right? And what, what can we do to help you make that solution happen?
And so that we're working on.
Yeah.
And the attorney did get back to us, and it's, it's just, it is a very unique situation. Like every other situation we've faced in the last three years.
Understood.
Hey, Tim, with all due respect, can you, I understand the situation 100%, I get it. But with all due respect, can you tell us what that timeline looks like?
We just got the email Easter, yesterday afternoon.
Because we asked the question quite a while ago.
Right.
And we talked to Ellen and said, what can we do to help?
Yeah.
Right? So we're not, you know, we're not trying to be assholes about it. We're just trying to say, what can we do? How can we help?
Yeah.
And let's just come up with, whatever the solution is, let's come up with it. And you guys give us a commitment that you can stay on it. Not that we have to come back in six months and say, what happened? That's what we're asking for.
And you, I absolutely agree, but in fairness, particularly to Ellen, because we've just changed law firms, literally, this, the letter from the lawyer starts with an apology to Ellen saying, thank you for your patience, I'm sorry it took me so long to get back to you.
100%, I understand, but now that you have the lawyer...
Oh, we do, yeah.
Now that he knows the complexities, let's work towards, what's the win-win situation? Right?
So I can't give you a timeline.
Right.
Unless you can.
But you can keep poking us. Because it's really going to be based on what decision you make for the path forward on his recommendation.
Yeah.
We can move forward and make the repairs to make the road passable.
Should we get on the agenda for like two months from now or a month from now to see how you guys are doing?
Or we can just update them. Yeah, I don't know if we need to...
What's the decision?
If you update me, Ellen, I can send it around to, I've got email lists, because it's, we have an association there, Tuckaway Shores Association, there's 32 lot owners out there. And then off to the side, there's, you know, five or six other houses or maybe 10 other properties out there. But I have the email addresses for everybody, so we just blast it out. So either with, through Donna or myself, you know, keep us posted on that.
And how many people are on the Raymond portion? Because it's being construed.
Four.
Four currently.
Then more than four?
There's nine property owners on the Raymond section.
How many houses though?
No, but you need to know property owners. It's a private road, so any property owner...
It has to be, it has to be every landowner, so I think there was nine plus the three new that were subdivided off of Felsom.
That's, that includes...
So there's nine plus, so there's a dozen now?
Nope.
So there'll be about nine.
Nine.
Nine, oh, nine after the subdivision?
Correct. Okay, nine property owners out there.
Did we talk about Raymond?
Raymond section, yes.
So you're asking for communication?
Communication and progress, yes. In the interim, you know, fix it, please.
Sorry, there's a comment from behind you. If you could just stand up, state your name and address.
That's true. I'm thinking of almost 30 years, I'm just knowing about this prior road. And I'm thinking, what is the term for prior road? What does that mean? Does it mean that the owners of that road are to maintain it, even though I know the town has been doing it for years? Okay? And I'm just like, give me what that means. I'd like to let it know.
That's exactly what it means, is that the property owners own the, own the road. So similar to...
I own my driveway, right? And I should maintain my driveway, right? I shouldn't expect you to come and maintain my driveway, right? So I'm really like, I just kept my mouth quiet for a very long time. And you let people, God bless you, but you know what, it's time that you take responsibility where you're, you want this private road, you need to maintain it. We don't want a private road. We don't live on that private road.
We live on a town road.
Okay.
That's a misunderstanding, I think.
Excuse me. Excuse me. I'm not going to use the hand, but please, we're not going back and forth with the public.
The desire is to know more about this.
Yes.
Because I'm hearing conflict that the owners of the lake, that you're, you own this road.
No, no, they don't know, no.
So it's a town road, who owns it? Who's responsible?
So, so just to give you a little bit of background, there's a half-mile stretch of this road that is in Raymond, okay? And then beyond that, the same road is in Nottingham, and that's where all the Nottingham residents live. So the stretch for them to get from Mountain Road to their houses is that half-mile that's in Raymond that's a private road owned by Raymond residents. That's the, so they cannot...
This is why I want clarification, and I'm getting different from everybody. I'm like, what do you mean it's a private road and we're not maintaining it?
No, no, it's not like Maple Bridge, which is a road that was approved by the townspeople this year on the warrant articles to be accepted as a town road. That was a private road, it was built by a developer, I mean, it's a very different road than Mendle Road. But that was being plowed by the residents, they were paying for that until it was accepted as a town road. So that's...
So, okay, so we, as people, I don't know who wrote this in, said, okay, we'll take it over, it'll be our town road.
Right. As we did with all of the roads that are surrounding the lake five years ago.
And it's basically the Lake people want that, right?
No, it's people on the town, the dirt roads that want it.
People on the, why don't we just, if we're going to maintain something, right? When you, because if I had a dirt driveway, I paved it because it got to the point where it was craziness, every time it rains, every time it, whatever. Don't you think maybe we should just pave it then?
Well, again, so the issue is, it's not our road to pave. It's a private road.
See, that's what I keep saying.
We're trying to, and this is what we're trying to figure out.
So we need to come to an agreement, right? This is not easy.
It's complicated.
It's, and that's why we're trying to figure it out and work with the residents of Nottingham to figure out those.
And we'll, we'll make a position.
Can you give us the, a summary of the options that the lawyer has given you that you guys are going to discuss in the board? Or...
Yeah, I think it's all viable.
Yeah.
They're winded, worded. Do you want to?
So, option was, continue, continue to do what we've been doing.
Right.
Right? And then try to get the Raymond, the Board of Just approval to continue. And you've got a few new homeowners that will be going in, so be contingent upon their approval as well. That's going to be tough on us improving that stretch of road. And then also, we could enter into an agreement with the abutters in Raymond to allow road work, but again, that can be subject to a challenge by them. The other one is to work with the town of Raymond.
Right.
To see if they will accept their road as a town road. But again, that would take a warrant, and I'm not sure if their Board of Selectment would be willing. Because what's the benefit to that town?
Right.
I'm having a hard time carrying back here.
Yeah, can we? Well, those don't, those don't broadcast in the room. That's for the people on, which they can't hear anyway. So I think there's, there's just a few options. None of them are going to be fantastic or really, they're all muddy, but we've got to figure out which ones going to work best for everyone.
Right.
But it starts with us talking to Raymond and seeing what and if, anything they would be willing to do. And then from there, the abutters.
Right.
Tim, if Raymond accepted the road with the understanding that Nottingham was going to take care of it, is that a potential solution?
That's a potential, yeah.
Okay, so it's not just going to Nottingham, to Raymond saying, hey, accept this.
Right.
Which, to your point, why wouldn't they?
Right.
But if they accepted it with the understanding that Nottingham was going to maintain it, and that's the willingness of...
Right.
But that's only if the town of Raymond accepts it.
Which the vote, the voters have to accept it. So then it's them, them explaining to the voters how...
If, if that doesn't work, the option of getting all of the property owners on that particular road to sign an agreement, if the lawyer wrote up some sort of agreement...
That's why I was asking how many people there were, just how...
I'm sure us as a group would be more than willing to help you people, get in touch with them and get those agreements signed so that we can get the road maintained.
Yeah.
So we're willing to help.
The tricky issue is if for some reason, let's say there was a person in Raymond that just didn't like all the Kent people that are driving by their house all the time, and they're like, you know what, I don't want my road improved, stop doing this. And they can do that because they own it.
Absolutely.
With all due respect, it's not Kent people, it's your, your residents.
Lake residents. We've, we've called the thing that was passed years ago, the Camp Road warrant article. And in our case, we have 40 in Nottingham and approximately nine property owners in Raymond. And they're not even fully built yet. So it, our averages work that it might be, nine's an easy number to reach out to. If it was like 40 Raymond people for nine Nottingham people, it'd be like a lot of work for it. I totally get it. If people in Nottingham also raise a fit, then we have to get the...
So yes, we will work on it. We'll be more communicative with you to make sure you understand what...
We end up going the, get the property owners to sign something root in agreements stating that they'll, you know, allow the town of Nottingham to maintain it. Or they, you know, if you put right in that agreement, or they accept responsibility for maintaining themselves. Something, where, some sort of wording, you know, with legalese to that effect, I'm sure would change or, you know, bend these people towards saying, you know, go ahead, fine, I'll sign it, get it over with, somebody else is going to maintain it, I don't want to have to do it. So there's ways to word things like that where, you know, it steers them in the right direction.
Yeah.
Eric, can I ask a question? I don't know, and I don't know if you do. Is there likely to be more development on the Raymond side of that road? And does the developer have any skin in the stick?
Just the three houses that are going up right now. One's changing hands in two weeks. It's going to be sold. The other two are not sold. So there's a builder there that, you know, I'm sure he'd be on board with it. And I was talking with that builder. From what I understand, they have something in their purchase and sales agreement that states something to the effect that they're responsible for the road.
Right. Because it's a private road. We do have to move on.
Yes.
We've got a seven o'clock appointment with the Department of Transportation.
Right.
But...
Thank you for your time.
You're welcome. Thank you.
So Ellen, do we need to do anything special to get up on the screen?
Um, it might be the input. Are you plugged into HDMI?
Yes. I have problems with that projector. We just used it.
I'm like, coming up next to you here to see this.
Calvert project that came out like a year, two years ago on the first time.
They were broadcasting. I don't know what we're doing.
Is that cord in the back good?
No, all of the...
Yes.
Very similar to... Phosphorus floating steady. Take out that one.
I think you shut it off, Steve. No?
But it was still funded to try to help maintain.
Doug, where are you? Doug, where are you? Sometimes he does. Doug, we can use your help.
Do you have a bunch of feed, Doug?
That's right there. Do you have a pork for the other? I don't.
There's only two options.
I know.
Can you unplug in?
Is the laptop recognizing the plugin? It didn't, no, it didn't seem to.
I didn't know if the laptop usually keeps watching. There we go.
Oh, yeah.
All right.
Wait. Wait, don't change it.
Yes.
Doug, we're good.
Thank you for your patience, gentlemen. So we are going to go into our seven o'clock appointment with the New Hampshire Department of DOT. This is a presentation on the proposed changes for the Route Four intersection and Cooper Hill Road and 152. They're going to go over some of the options that they're reviewing and the next steps. And then after, upon the conclusion of their presentation, they'll be available in the town kitchen if you have additional questions for them. And then this is not a public hearing. This is more of a presentation. There'll be a public hearing in the future regarding this project, am I right? Yes. Okay. So if you guys would like to introduce yourselves and then get started?
Great. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Select Board. And thank you, Ms. White, for helping set this up. My name is Brett Rustnok. I am the project manager for the NHDOT and the 41595 project. With me tonight, I have Trent Zanes. He's our lead geometrics engineer at the DOT. And Dylan Schmidt, he is the environmental manager for this project. So I'd like to start off by saying we are really good at designing roads, but we are not roadway users in this town. And so it's really important that we're here tonight and getting input and feedback from the town, from the town staff, from the Select Board members, and from the public. Because we're really good at designing roads, but we don't use this area every day. We're not living in this area. And we really value the input of everybody here. So tonight, we're going to introduce the project location, the purpose and need, the corridor, and the prior project history. Talk about the current project history and the scope, the project development process, the existing conditions and challenges, traffic volumes and crash history, our alternatives that we've developed, and estimated schedule and next steps. So I mentioned I'm the project manager. I have Trent and Dylan here with us. Also on the DOT team is Oase Khalid. He's our lead engineer. And Dan Primo, he is our roadway group leader. So as you probably know, the project location is at the intersection of US Route Four, New Hampshire Route 152, and Cooper Hill Road in both towns of Northwood and Nottingham. And just for transparency, we did meet with the Select Board in the town of Northwood on April eighth. So we thought it was really important to get to both towns and discuss this early on. So I'd like to start off with the purpose and need. And this is something that is very central to developing projects through the New Hampshire process and the federal process, where we identify the purpose of a project and also outline in detail the need for that. And that becomes a lot more important in the evaluation of alternatives, particularly in the environmental stage, where we evaluate whether each alternative meets the stated purpose and need of the project. So the project purpose is to improve the safety of the US Four and New Hampshire 152 intersection in Northwood and Nottingham. And the need, which has been expressed by the Stratford Regional Planning Commission with support from the towns, is high volumes of automobile and truck traffic, high speeds on US Route Four, and also lower speeds on intersecting roadways, a steep grade of US Four at the intersection, and a skewed alignment of the intersection, steep grade and obstructions that reduce site distance. So I'll talk a little bit about the corridor history through here. In 1801, US Route Four was New Hampshire's first turnpike, built between Portsmouth and Concord, reportedly at a cost of $900 per mile. I wish we could get rates like that these days. And the graphic in the bottom right is a historical marker located in Northwood about the first New Hampshire turnpike. The image in the top right is a... From the Turnpikes of New England book from 1919. And it highlights the first New Hampshire turnpike with the project location circled in red. In 1947, US Route Four was reconstructed between Northwood and Durham. In 2004, US Route Four was repaved between Northwood and me. And there certainly was other pavement surfacing in that timeframe, but that was the most recent that I discovered. In 2024, the DOT Traffic Division restripped the dual-left turn lane west of the intersection. That used to be a truck climbing lane, shown in the bottom photograph, and now is a dual-use center turn lane. And in 2025, you've probably seen the grooved pavement on Route Four that is planned repaving of US Route Four. So you may know this. This project already existed about 25 years ago. So in late 1990s, there was a project included in the DOT 10-year plan to reconstruct the US Route Four intersection with New Hampshire Route 152 and Cooper Hill Road, and including the relocations of both of those roads near the intersection. In late, near 2000, a public hearing was completed for that project. And the graphic on the right side is the public hearing plan that was shared at that time. In early 2001, the preferred alternative was developed, which included a new traffic signal about 300 feet to the east, new spur roads for property access, new curb and sidewalk along the north edge of US Route Four to the west. And that project included four planned property acquisitions. In mid-2001, the acquisition and demolition for three of those four parcels was completed. In late 2001, there was a reconsideration requested of the preferred alternative. In 2002, the suggested project scale was reduced to maintain the intersection location and widen shoulders along US Four and 152. Finally, in 2003, lack of consensus on the right level improvement led to the project being tabled. So because we're here tonight, obviously, the project has come right back around. And so I will go into a little bit of detail about how that came about. In 2017, the project was promoted by the Stratford Regional Planning Commission and the towns to enter the 10-year plan again. In 2018, the project entered the 2019 to 28 10-year plan with preliminary engineering first program for 2024. The current scope is intersection safety improvements to the US Route Four, New Hampshire Route 152 intersection, very similar to the previous project scope. The current project may maintain the use of the property that was acquired in 2001. And right now, the alternatives under consideration are no build, a signalized intersection, and a roundabout intersection. And the slide, the picture on the bottom right is an excerpt from our 10-year plan. It's a little bit fuzzy, but that essentially outlines the programmed funds at various stages in the project. So I'd like to turn it over to Trent, and he's going to talk about some of the existing conditions and challenges that we face at the intersection.
Yep. So first of all, I'll note that we have some red arrows that show some high speeds. And they're relatively high speeds. The 85th percentile, or 85% of the people, are driving 50 miles an hour or less. So it's really not that high for a 45 mile an hour speed zone. But it's definitely higher than the 35 mile an hour speeds on 152 and on Cooper Hill Road, which is posted, I believe, for 30 miles an hour. So when you have people trying to get out from those side roads onto Route Four, they're trying to find a gap. And there's usually... The signals up on the hill will help create a gap by platooning vehicles heading eastbound. So when there's a green light up there, the cars will go. And when it's red, it'll create a gap down at the bottom. But it's the westbound vehicles that can be coming in sporadically, making it harder to find a gap to get out. Another thing we've identified that's a problem is that that eastbound right turn onto 152 obviously is very gradual. And I don't... There's no yield sign, there's no stop sign. So it's uncontrolled. Presumably, it would be a yield condition. But it doesn't require anybody to really slow down and make that turn. So that's a concern for us as well. We do know that there's a number of crashes at the intersection, including injuries and one reported fatality in 1990. Some of the concerns that we had to work with is the North River, which is just to the east. It's actually just in Nottingham. And then we have some historic properties, one on the corner of the southeast quadrant of 152 and Route Four, and then further to the west on Route Four as well. So, yeah, so traffic volumes on an average day in 2024 is 9,300 vehicles going east and west on Route Four. Route 152 has 2,400 on an average day. And then you'll see we have a build year, which is when we anticipate building the project. And then we design for the project to be 20 years beyond that, so that whatever we're investing in the project gives us a good return 20 years from now. So we've grown the traffic volumes up about 1%, which is pretty standard in New Hampshire. We have crash data from our Safety Bureau that shows 57% of the crashes involved collision with another vehicle. And that's where you're going to see more of the serious injuries is with a two-vehicle crash. And 43% of the crashes over the last five years involve left-turning vehicles. So it's probably a T-bone type accident, which is also another severe type of crash. Right now, 16% of the crashes show serious, suspected serious or minor injury. So we haven't seen a lot of serious crashes to date, but the potential is there.
Thank you.
So this right here, this is the signal plan, which if you get a chance to see it afterwards, it might be easier. You can pull it up if you want.
Okay. Yeah, I'm going to pull up a full-size file showing that alternative, which might be a little bit easier to see. And then it might also... I think we can see that. All right, Trent, take it away.
All right. So I'll start with defining the colors, although everything looks kind of yellow. The yellow...
Two more colors.
Right. This one with some brown in there, it's an orange. But the yellow in the center of the roadway, that's from the white line to the white line. That's the travelway, and it shows the lanes to the west and to the east. You see the orange, which is the painted median for the two-way left turn lane. And then to the east, we have a painted median where we develop the left turn lane at the signals. So as I said, the yellow in the center is the travelway. The brown represents the proposed shoulders, in this case, five-foot wide shoulders. And then outside of that is beyond the pavement. So that should be green. It's more of a yellow-green. But that shows where we tie into the existing topography. So essentially, on Route Four, we're just widening to create those left turn lanes. But we are chasing some of the fill down. And then on 152, because we're offline, we have to come from a low point and climb up to Route Four. And so that's what you see is a lot of fill on either side of the road. And then going up Cooper Hill Road, we're pretty much on grade right there. So you'll see where we're cutting a ditch line on either side of the road to collect stormwater. And so this is a pretty standard signalized layout. The lanes have been designed to allow for, during the peak hours, the traffic can get into the turn lanes. And we're very comfortable that this will operate well. One of the other things that we... With both alternatives is that... So we're adding pavement, so we're going to need to treat the stormwater that's out there. We're going to collect that. And we'll create a, we call it BNP, a Best Management Practice, or a stormwater treatment area somewhere on the project location. We haven't gotten that far with our design yet. The other thing you'll note is that we're, as we're showing it now, we're closing off Cooper Hill Road and 152, so that everyone can go through the signals for improved access management and to minimize the number of conflict points with Route Four, so people have a safer time getting in and out of Route Four.
Is that children's... Is that traffic right there?
Yes. So there are those arrows that you see, those are the actual lights and then all the... Those are mast arms. So, yeah, it's signal equipment, so it would be signalized.
What's the access point for the two businesses that are there right now? Would it be both on the new stretch of Cooper Hill and from Route 4?
Yeah. So, the way we're showing it, they would take the new Cooper Hill Road, connect to the old Cooper Hill Road, and then access it that way. We did talk to the property owner at our last meeting, who requested an access off the new Cooper Hill Road, and that's something we can, we're looking into.
But not off of Route 4?
Not off of Route 4.
Is there a receptive system?
We did see that. So, it's a conceptual plan. There's a lot of, a lot of things that we need to work on. We just got the survey back. But one of the other concerns is, if you want to scroll up, Brett, just a little bit, is this is similar to what was shown in the 2000 plan. If we were to try to bring Cooper Hill Road straight up, past the house with the bridge right in front of it, we'd have to cross that ravine and build a very large bridge to get over that. So, we purposely curved it in to tie in before that. The owner did mention something about the septic, and so we're going to work with her on that. And as the design progresses, we'll work with that as we need to. And you'll see the same thing with the roundabout that Brett's going to switch to now.
And both of those?
Go back to the table, please.
Did you, did you modify 152 also?
Yes. So, 152 will have access, 152 will tee in 300 feet east of the existing intersection. And there'll be a side road that'll come down to connect to the old 152 for those properties that would no longer have access to Route 4, which is really just these, these two, that one and across the street there. And so, what we would do is we would, this is the word that I can never remember. What is it? The right-of-way?
Discontinue?
Discontinue the right-of-way. And so, then that would become either a town road or a private road. It would, we would, we would discontinue it, it would become a town road. And then what you do with it would be, would be a-
But is that in, that's in Northwood, right?
Over Northwood.
Yeah.
Where's the line?
Right. So, that's the big question right here. You were just here for the private.
So, we'll see where that goes.
Oh, okay.
So, the lines, that, that red dotted right there?
Yes. Could you work on it, like, over the summer, so we can have an answer for another question?
So, moving on, we'll flip over to the roundabout and see. You'll see a lot of the same issues that we had with the signals as well. Same thing with 152, and the same thing with Cooper Hill Road and the septic system. But on Route 4, what you'll see is there's less widening, because we're not creating a left turn lane. It's just a single lane approach for all the approaches. The biggest impact would be where the intersection is, where the roundabout is, right now. We've done the analysis with the traffic numbers. We're very confident that this will work well. And so, I'll get to it before anybody else does. What happens when the traffic backs up from the intersection at the top of the hill? And that's on our radar. It's not part of the scope of this project. But with either option, traffic backing up would not be good for this intersection. So, we are going to look into see what kind of interim improvements might be made there, or if there's any long-term plans to, to address the timings or add additional lanes, or what could be done at that intersection. It's not in a vacuum. They are related to each other. So, yeah, so, for anyone who's, when I started, most people weren't familiar with roundabouts, but I think most everybody is now. But that gray circle in the middle is the truck apron. That's meant for large trucks with 53-foot trailers, to be able to go around the roundabout with a tractor, and then the trailer off tracks onto that apron. And so, it helps keep the circulatory roadway, the yellow, relatively narrow, so that one car will go around. And you shouldn't have two cars coming in at the same time. And I think this will operate very well also. The queues, which we sort of talked about with the last one, is the queues will be, will be minimal here. Even during the peak hours, we expect it to operate very well with maybe waiting one or two cars at the, at the entry to get in.
It's a single lane?
I'm sorry?
It's a single lane?
A single lane, right.
So, I guess my only question there would be is, when Lee was a single-lane traffic circle, which I know you have 125 as well, which is a busier road, but Route 4 would be backed up for miles?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Well, you nailed it, because it was Route 4 and 125.
Right.
Two major routes. And then at the top of the hill, you've got Route 4 and 202, which is a heavily traveled route as well. So, here, 152 is fairly low volume, and Cooper Hill Road is at very low volume. So, what you would see probably in the evening is there's a lot of left turns coming out of 152. Those would get priority over the westbound traffic. So, you'd probably see some queues on the westbound. But when I say that, it's with a roundabout, we call it a rolling queue. So, you're, when there's a gap, you go. A gap, you go. You're not sitting at a red light. So, the level of service, as we quantify it, is very good, because you're really not waiting that long to get in. And as my former boss said, you know, as far as roundabouts go, if you can turn right out of your driveway, you can drive the roundabout, because you just need to look easiest and done.
You should sit at Lee at 7 o'clock in the morning until 9 o'clock in the morning.
I think there should have been more conditions on that.
Yeah.
More, more built up on it. But basically, you look left, and if nobody's coming into the roundabout. And then you own it until you exit. So, it's a very efficient intersection. And it, what it really adds to is safety. And I'll have you go ahead and switch us over to that.
Is there a similar roundabout around here inside?
So, not that I'm familiar with.
155 go over the highway to Dunkin' Donuts. That's a single lane. They're irving there, and you back on the turnpike.
It's probably smaller than-
Yeah, Route 155, it's only a single lane. So, a tractor-trailer truck goes around that. It take, it goes up on that circle that you're talking about, the white. And it basically takes up that whole, three-quarters of that roundabout. So, I mean, it works well in that location, but I don't know over Route 4, because it's double-lane, like, least circle.
Yeah. So, Lee definitely needs the two lanes because of the amount of traffic that's going through. This really doesn't. So, by having it smaller, we've sized it for the trucks. So, it's always a balance between making it big enough for the trucks to get through, but small enough that people can't drive too fast, because that's where your safety benefits are. So, this is big enough for, for the trucks to get through in any direction, any movement. And at the same time, cars coming through are limited. We do a speed analysis and make sure that the cars can't just fly right through it. So, that you can see that, how big that gray circle is. That's the concrete that the trucks would travel on, the trailers. So, as you're entering, we call it deflection. You have to turn right before you can turn left, and then right again. And those movements, those consecutive movements require you to slow down to about 15 to 18 miles an hour. So, as I was saying, that really adds a lot for the safety benefits here. And I just noticed, so, there's a box culvert here in North River under US Route 4. That's similar for both options. We don't anticipate impacting it, but then we were out there tonight. We could see how far it just drops right off to the head wall for that pipe. So, obviously, as we progress with the design, there'll be more work needed to try to avoid impacting that and having to replace it, because it is so deep. And then, so, there's also a lot of other issues. I mentioned storm water. And then we've got wetlands that we need to be aware of and minimize impacts there as well, mostly along 152. So, if you want to flip to the next. So, what this shows here is, so, the traffic signals are predictable. Most people know how to go to traffic signals. You get a red light, you stop. You see somebody get a red light, and they might shoot through it. That's more common than it used to be, unfortunately. And there's a smaller footprint in the area of the intersection. The roundabout itself reduces fatal and severe injury crashes almost completely, because you really can't have a T-bone or a head-on collision with a roundabout. Those are your severe crashes. The traffic flows well, and it reduces overall intersection delay. And then the chart on the right, which really just looks like a lot of dots for, for most of you, I'm sure. But on the left is a roundabout, and on the right is a signalized intersection. And the red dots represent all of the places where two vehicles can come in contact with each other. So, with a roundabout, there's eight vehicle conflict points. And with a signalized intersection, there's 32. So, anyone making a mistake at the signals is more likely to have a collision with another vehicle, so.
What was it, nothing for the other?
So, it was eight for roundabout and 32 for a signalized intersection. The yellow or orange dots, we'll try to guess which one it is, those are pedestrian conflicts. And those are also reduced with a roundabout. But we don't have sidewalks proposed for this project.
How does one walk across Route 4 with a roundabout off Cooper Hill Road?
So, it'd be the same way that you do today. You'd have to look both ways and make sure nobody's coming. There's no crosswalks out there.
Good luck.
And there's no sidewalks either. So, for us to put in a crosswalk, you would have to have sidewalks or at least concrete tip downs, and those would be maintenance for the, for either town. And so, we haven't been asked to provide those. There are no, there's no sidewalk network out there today, correct?
But I am able to walk across Route 4 at 152?
Yes. Definitely. And you could, I would say-
It would be much more difficult with a roundabout. Well, of course, I- You're shot off Cooper Hill Road if you continue driving like that, all these screw-crossed things.
Correct. The benefits of a roundabout, though, if there were crosswalks, or even if there aren't, you're crossing one lane of travel at a time. And you have a refuge area in the middle. So, you could, you could be on the splitter element, you could be in the painted area. But you're really, you're looking in the direction the vehicles are coming. They're looking at you. You can stop in the middle, and then you're just looking in the other direction. So, you're really, really-
Where are your orange vests?
That's always a good idea. But you're a little less concerned in having to look both ways at the same time, because you're not going to go out and stand on that little line. So, those are our conceptual alternatives.
So, as we wrap up, I wanted to give Dylan a chance to mention some of our environmental process and opportunities that will arise as part of this project. And then we'll close with our estimated schedule.
Yeah. So, I just wanted to briefly touch on, you know, how NHDOT typically does their, you know, environmental reviews and what we adhere to. Essentially, we work under something called the National Environmental Policy Act, or NIPA, which requires us to take into consideration impacts that we can add to natural, cultural, or social environment. And it requires us to consider those impacts before making decisions. So, that's what we do here, and that's where we are beginning now. So, we're starting to identify the resources in the area. You know, some things that are of concern that I noticed are just, we potentially have some historic properties around. But the things that we look for are, say, you know, wildlife, invasive plant species, wetlands, contaminated resources, and more. We anticipate getting out in the field this spring and summer, which could spill into 2026 as well, weather-dependent and design-dependent. So, that's, that's where we are right now, looking at the natural resources. So, we don't really have much to say, but we're underway on our review. It's what we're looking at.
And that graphic on the screen there is hard to read. That's some information from the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services One Stop Application. They show historic properties that have been subject to contamination review or spills or releases.
Yeah. Those red asterisks are what are known as hazardous waste remediation sites. They can be pretty vague at the surface level. It could mean that there is a current oil spill. It could mean that there was a remediated oil spill 20 years ago. So, just gives us something to take an extra look at to make sure there's nothing going on. And then, another part of our environmental review is Section 106 of the National Historic Preservation Act. So, now, this requires the Department and the Federal Highway Administration to review for historic impacts, as well as in a total different side of things than the natural resource side. So, part of the Section 106 actually requires us to solicit the, the public for consulting parties. So, I have information on that here. But essentially, it's whoever's in the town with a stake in some historic or archaeological or cultural resource. And you can have more of a position to coordinate with us and, and provide feedback and consult with us on our designs. To do that, you just, please get in contact with me, myself, or I have information here for our federal highway representative. Its name is Jamie Sikora. And, and as well, I have some pamphlets by the check-in out back. So, so, anytime, you can call me, email me, whatever, or talk to me today. But essentially, just wanted to get the point across that we're looking at these resources. We're trying to figure out our least impactful solutions and avoid what we can. And we will hopefully have more information on that come this, this spring and summer.
How you doing?
Dylan?
Yes?
I'm a historical society. Can you get your card?
Sure. Yes. I don't believe I brought any with me, but I will give you my contact information. I apologize for that. Yeah.
And I have business cards with me that I will leave, and I can put you in touch with them. So, to close, I'd like to share our estimated schedule and next steps for this project. We are, we've completed information gathering, survey, and initial data collection. We met with the both towns and public officials. That's concluding tonight. In the summer and fall of this year, we expect to hold a public informational meeting. And that will be advertised by the DOT to the public, including all abutters to the project area, in a wide distribution. We usually use every door direct mailers to get a really good distribution of information to people. And Dylan mentioned some of the natural and cultural work that's going on. And in the summer and fall of this year, we're going to be continuing our alternatives refinement with input from the select board of both towns and the public. We expect in the winter or spring of next year to hold a public informational meeting where we essentially present the information we've found and solicit the preferred alternative with the towns. And finally, or I guess not finally, but in the fall of 2026, we're expecting a public hearing, which is a very formal process, where the state appoints a commission to determine if there is cause for layout of this highway and the potential taking of property. And it's a very formal process that will be very, it's very prescribed and laid out, and there's a lot of notifications that happen there. And then finally, in the summer of '27 through '28, fall of '28, we're expecting permitting and right-of-way acquisition. Final design will be in that same timeframe. And right now, the construction advertisement date is programmed for 2029. And we're hoping for a spring '29 advertisement. And at least some work would hopefully start in 2029. So, on the screen is a QR code to the project website. We will have this presentation available on our website, along with the graphics of the alternatives. Right now, I believe just the presentation from the town of Northwood is up there, but it's very similar. So, we're hoping to use that as a resource to share information with anybody who's interested. So, thank you all for your time, and we'll take any questions from the board, or we'll be happy to close up.
I think what we're going to do is take Q and A from the public in the kitchen, but if the board has any questions.
It's just a long ways out.
It is.
A lot long ways out, a lot farther than I expected.
Is there a completion date? The start date in 2029, right?
Yeah. Start date would likely be 2029. A completion date would likely not be in '29. It would likely extend to the following year.
Nice.
Any questions?
No doubt. I prefer a light versus rotaries. I hate rotaries.
What's that?
I hate rotaries.
I do, too, but-
I'd prefer a light intersection, but that's just me.
If the, the, that current intersection is trying to go up there all the time for cobrouting, the, the traffic coming down off the hill is definitely moving, and your younger drivers are trying to make it out there, which they relatively make it out.
Like you say, at least that, you get a break because of the light.
And then, so, if there's a light, there is definitely going to be as much initiative to just blow through the red light as there would be for anything else, because they're like, I'm already moving down the hill. I travel this route quite a bit. So, coming into Epping, there's an additional light- coming into Epping, there's an additional light warning of the light ahead is now red. And this is not in extreme grade, but it is a grade. And then once you turn, if there's like six cars waiting at a red light and an eighteen-wheeler is now moving at fifty-five miles an hour and he comes around this corner, he seems like he's going to have a reduced amount of time to come, to slow down for not moving traffic. Somebody transitioning the intersections, one thing, but that's three hundred feet up, and you can see up the hill. You're now moving that three hundred feet down. So are you potentially looking at a warning light of the red light? Like there is potentially stopped traffic for your traffic light scenario?
So the warning light is typically something we do with a signal that isn't doing well or doesn't have good sight distance ahead of it. So that's, that's kind of a mitigation that there's a problem at that signal. This one being three hundred feet further to the east, there is significant sight line coming down the hill. You wouldn't be able to see cars queued up there, and we think that it's flat enough that you'd be able to cut, you know, slow down and come to a stop.
I was taking this meeting into consideration the other day when I was driving. I'm like, alright, if I'm coming down, I'd seen the proposed solutions. Like if that's down here, when can I finally see it? And you're almost at the current one fifty-two turnoff before you can kind of clearly see where this intersection is based off tree lines, et cetera.
Well, the other thing I wanted to mention about the roundabouts itself themselves is that they kind of act as a gateway treatment. So there's a lot of Route Four to the east in Nottingham, but as you're heading west, you know, it's a higher speed, I think it drops down to forty-five miles an hour just before you get to here. But if you have the roundabout, it's a much more visual cue that you're, you're entering a different area. You're entering like a built-up community, so that's why I say it has like a gateway effect, and there's options for the central island that's typically grass. But if you have a, a gardening club in town or something, you know, you can, there's a lot of things that can be done in the middle to let people know that, you know, you, you need to slow down for this. And the speeds coming out of the intersection going up the hill, even though it's, it's forty-five, but then it drops to thirty-five, I think the speeds will still be relatively lower. So, so there'll be some speed control from the roundabout. But you're right, if somebody's coming down and they, they see a green light, they may be encouraged to want to try to catch that. And that's, as we noted with the conflict points, the, with the signalized intersection, even with the lights, you can't stop somebody from, from going through.
Correct. I can definitely see, because people get frustrated with the other light at two oh two significantly, like, I mean, and that is a hit or miss, hit or miss light. I'll be going up to get my daughter a practice, and it either takes me three minutes or it takes me thirteen. And it's like, what is going on up here? And that I can just see where the frustration coming down the hill if we have another I don't know, conflagration, if you will, just people, it, it would add to the frustration, or at least in a signal, people are going to just say, I've just waited long enough, I'm going for it. I can definitely see the issue with people. I don't like roundabouts at all, but I see the safety aspect dealing with the other intersection up the hill.
Yeah, but you probably coordinate the lights a little bit.
We could, we could if it was, if it was beneficial.
Yeah, it definitely seems like the east-west traffic does not get as high of a priority as the turning traffic. But the turning traffic coming east, turning onto two oh two backs up significantly, which causes another whole issue.
One fifty-two and Cooper could be a triggered light.
Yeah.
Which means that would say green most of the time.
And I think we have our highway director and fire and police all here to investigate this a little bit more too. The turn coming up onto Cooper, I think he's looking at it as a plowing aspect of it. He didn't seem quite happy with that turn when you were pointing it out earlier, so how.
Sounds like it'd be Northwood's problem.
No, that's very close to ours. I don't know who owns that bridge, but it, we've had a different, when the state came in, it told us that they're replacing the bridge on one fifty-two. We were told, this is what we're doing. There wasn't a lot of input, so you're still in the hopefully accepting input stage. Okay. Yeah.
Yeah, and we find with our projects that the more input we have earlier on in the stage, earlier on in the process, the more successful the project is overall. So it's really important that we hear your voices and feedback and know what's important to the towns.
Do our police chief, fire chief, or public works director have any questions or input?
I mean, no, we got to settle down, how long ago was it, Ellen? We really went over this for a while. Yeah, I don't like roundabouts either, but I can say it from a safety point. For driving, the more vehicle crashes that we have, that's going to be the best bet. I think the traffic light there is going to be very dangerous. And probably in the future, and they'll probably tell you that, yeah, at that other intersection in Northwood, that's probably going to turn into a roundabout too. So, yeah. I'm mad that it's coming in Nottingham, why isn't this, why are you moving the intersection? Move it the other way. I said that for an hour when we met with them, but they didn't listen to me. Yeah, I mean, it's going to happen, they're going to change it, and a roundabout's a best-case scenario. That's my, that's my intuition, that's my view.
Thank you, chief. So if you guys want to set up in the kitchen and there's any other questions, they can field them in there.
Great.
Thanks for coming out.
Thanks, guys.
It, it doesn't sound like it would happen.
For one fifty-two, it'll be expensive. Because there are definitely times where I cannot get out on the roof floor that I feel safe.
I know, I. But you're doing it every day.
That's a, that was a really helpful presentation for me.
Or a young driver.
I've read so many rumors that. They knew how much we hated the Lee roundabout.
Twenty-nine doesn't help.
I could bump there. I could bump there, and the police officer said, there's a mass incident here every day. It's not a terrible one, but every single day, there's a police.
Don't touch it.
Guys will walk out, and then hopefully people follow. Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, so we do have to get on with the rest of our meeting, everyone. So if you could just please, if you have questions, clear out. Thank you.
Yeah?
All right, moving on in our agenda, Ellen, the town administrator's report.
Starting next Thursday, May first, the recycling center is going to be switching to its summer schedule. So Thursday hours will be eleven AM to seven PM. Friday and Saturday will remain the same.
You said, what's the date?
May first, Thursday, May first. You're welcome. Teresa Bascom, you had already announced this, but Teresa Bascom resigned her position on the planning board effective April tenth. The board is now seeking to fill this vacancy until the next election in March of 2026. They're also looking to appoint an alternate member, so anyone that may be interested, there's a notice posted on the town website, and we just encourage you to email Land use clerk Alana Kenny with your interest. Additionally, there still is a budget committee vacancy. They will be meeting on Thursday, May fifteenth at seven o'clock to review any letters of interest that have been received for the open seat. As of right now, there is one, and I believe there may be another one or two that may be incoming, but I haven't seen them yet. On April fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, Charlotte already reported Car, the police department's Car Three, which is a 2023 Ford Explorer, was involved in a motor vehicle accident. The vehicle has been declared a total loss by our insurance provider. The assessed value, it came in at twenty-nine thousand seven hundred, which leaves a shortfall of sixteen thousand seven eighty-seven to replace the cruiser at the current state bid pricing. I wanted to put this out here because obviously we need to replace the cruiser. Chief Woodman has already received a quote for this, from Gropone through the state bid pricing to replace the cruiser. It would be an ordered unit to match our current fleet in the graphite gray, is that correct?
Yes, carbonized gray.
Carbonized gray, okay. So obviously, we're in a bit of a quandary right now in terms of trying to figure out where the shortfall will come from, whether it be absorbed into the operating budget, which is the assumption because we don't have a capital reserve fund set up. We do have special detailed revenue fund that's available, but it requires legislative body approval. So that would be a conversation for a special town meeting or not an option at this point, so. The total cost is forty-six thousand four hundred and eighty-seven dollars. So the insurance will cover twenty-nine thousand seven hundred in replacement value. So if you would like to have that discussion, I've kind of left it open-ended. I didn't really put it on as an action item, but at this point, you know, Fawn is, she has a copy of her current budget year-to-date expenditures. I, I think that at this point, because the, the need presents itself, I think we have to find it within our operating budget. Thankfully, we're not in a default budget, but it's, it's possibly going to limit some expenditures down the road.
And the other option you said was to have a public hearing to use.
No, it would, it would require a special meeting.
A special meeting.
Yep, so we'd have, and because we're SB two, it would require budget committee, public hearing, deliberative session, and a voting session, so.
Okay, so which would be an additional four thousand dollars.
And in check, it, so we, we definitely have sixteen thousand dollars in that fund. I think Betsy gave me a quick calculation today and figured there's about twenty-one in there because it is actively paying for and receiving revenue in for the special details that the police department is doing.
Well, if we feel we can take it out of the budget.
Right, I mean, that would be the easiest thing to do.
Yeah.
And maybe we kind of look.
So we're going to have to look.
Something, look ahead with something to do with that fund.
Yes.
Started talking about that at the end of last year.
Correct. We had talked about putting it on, but we already had so many Warren articles that it got moved down in the priority list. But with that being said, for her to proceed forward with the purchase, which I would know she would like to give Gropone the go-ahead as soon as possible so we can get it on order. It's going to be a few months out, Fawn?
Yeah, quick, it'd probably be before July.
Okay. So July, but we'll have to take a better look at the operating budget and figure out what line item transfers you want to do to make that purchase happen because it will result in us over expending the, the line for the cruiser this year.
Obviously, so it's just.
But still within the police department?
Correct.
I believe, chief, you want to just come up quickly?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, no, you're getting.
Because if you don't push it, they're going to just be like, accept it. You might want to just question why did that come?
It's based on the depreciation of the cruiser, it's a two-year-old cruiser? Correct.
It's probably got, what, sixty thousand miles on it?
Yeah, it's about seventy now, yep. I mean, right when you pull it off the law, it depreciates, unfortunately, I agree with you. I mean, I trust Primex. It's who we use, right?
Correct. Primex.
And can we go up to the other vehicle?
What's that?
The other vehicle that was involved in the crash, can we hit their insurance company at all?
And that's, I mean, we're not even.
That's up to Primex too.
That's insurance companies. Sure, what would you like to know? I think the cleanest way to do this is to find money within my budget to do it.
No, and I believe she was mentioning there was some components that, some, that you think you might be able to salvage or probably not.
Oh, yeah, so, correct, so of course you don't know until they get in there, right? So my outfitter, I was also P-Mount Electronics, they're going to be by this week to take a look at the cruiser, and they're going to strip it of all the equipment. So knock on wood, yes, my layman's looking at my, you know, my, looking at the stuff. It doesn't look damaged, right? But so you want to think like operationally, even if my radio doesn't look damaged, I mean, those are like, you really don't, so once they get in, they'll know, they'll know, but looking at it, I don't, I don't anticipate much of that equipment to be damaged. And I anticipate, and this is why we, we need to get the same exact cruiser, all that equipment going into the other cruiser, kind of like clean slate, if that makes any sense. You get into the weeds if you're trying to like, okay, you know, let's try to make a deal on a cruiser. It's not going to fit, it's like round egg square hole type thing, and then we're looking at time. But this is the cleanest way to do it, and in looking at it, yes, nothing looks outwardly damaged, thank goodness, other than the crash bar, which did its job, so.
Sorry, jumped ahead of this. The officer, officer is okay?
Yeah, so he, you know, he's banged up, you know, he's got some scrapes and bruises, and he got a concussion. But yeah, he's okay, he's back to work, he came back to work today. Yeah, he's doing great.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And then, so we is, trying to get the big picture of your department right here. So the pickup truck, which we had, the mobile data unit decided to burn itself out.
Correct, yes.
Is that one hundred percent back? I know that it was, okay, so that completed its.
Correct.
Okay.
Except for the MDT, that's still being software systems, but we have other MDTs that when we take that cruiser. Well, actually, now we have an extra one, so we'll be, we'll be able to do everything that we need. So yeah, cruiser, knock on wood, that's up and running, it's in, it's in rotation, it's doing really well.
And then we have the other four, the other three cruisers available. So you're at four, which is basically where you were at when the pickup truck went out of service for the last six months.
Right, so now we're back to square one again, like when we ended up having a pickup truck.
Okay.
Literally, within a week. Awesome.
Well, at least it didn't both happen at the same time.
Yeah, right, that could happen, this is true, this is true.
Curious if the carbonized gray might be a bad color for us, it seems to be the.
No blue?
The, the issues we had, the transmission went out on that car and everything else, but anyway.
I mean, we have kind of been on, I mean, it's, yeah.
Was that the one that had the transmission problem?
Mm-hmm, so that's okay, goodbye.
And the one that had the rodents that bit all the pieces?
Right, actually, it's the same, yeah, so.
Oh, so maybe this is a good thing.
I mean, you know, I, you always have to look at something, you know what I mean? So, you know, knock on wood, you know, the other driver's alive, Mike's alive, and the cruiser that was really kind of no good went away. But never a good thing, right? We're, you know, it's apologetic that it happened, you know, nobody ever wants that to happen. But this is where we are, and I think that, yeah, I mean, I have to find money within my budget to do it. But I do think that the bigger picture, me and Ellen have been talking about this for like a year, is getting that detail, being, being able to use that probably for situations, you know, like this, you can say it, right?
So your twenty twenty-five cruiser that you are, before this one went out of service, you are already planning on one, so that one was ordered and we're expecting.
Correct, yeah, actually, it's already being built, and I have a ship date of end of June.
Okay.
Yep. Yep, so probably get those two cruisers at the same time. And then also have one to trade in, not to bring that up, but you guys had talked about maybe wanting, I'm just letting you know it's still.
Correct, yeah, the one that was potentially up for trade this year.
And it wasn't the one that was crashed, so this is, yeah, the twenty twenty-one.
Right, and you said that was relatively.
It is, yep. Don't change it.
Okay. Well, chief, that is your budget, and if you believe you have the means inside of your budget to do that, then I think we need to get you back up to staffing. I don't know if it re-require a motion for this, Ellen, or.
No.
Because it's within her, we're just replacing a unit.
Thank you.
Cool, thank you. On the good news, my officer May took her academy PT test today, passed with flying colors, so she'll be starting the academy in a couple weeks.
Awesome.
And our other officer, Seth Cornell graduates on Friday, so we, we swap one out, right? We lose what we're going, so. Those are, I always wanted to end on a positive note, so.
Thanks, chief.
We're getting there, we're getting there.
Thank you, chief.
No problem, no problem.
Yeah, so no motion required now when we figure out what needs to be line item transferred within the operating budget when we get to the point of payment, then we'll motion for that. Moving on, per the recommendation of the planning board, they are requesting the appointment of Glenn Griswold to serve as Nottingham's representative to Stratford Regional Planning Commission. There are two seats that Nottingham gets on their commission. This one would be for a term expiring February first of twenty twenty-eight. And so I'd be looking for a motion to appoint him and then just to put it out there to the general public. With Teresa Bascom's resignation, there's a second.
So I will make the motion to appoint Glenn Griswold to serve as a Nottingham representative to the Stratford Regional Planning Commission, the term expiring two, one, 2028.
I'll second.
There's been a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
And then, just looking forward to your next meeting on May fifth, we had tentatively discussed offering a public hearing on whether or not we proceed with reconstruction and paving on Stevens Hill Road. Is that still something that you wish to pursue, based on a little bit more clarification coming in from the attorney?
I think it would be a good idea.
I think it would be a good idea. It was so confusing.
Right, I think you explain our position on it.
Yeah.
Okay, so I will schedule that and get the hearing notice. I will schedule it for probably the seven PM time slot again in the middle of your selectmen's meeting. Okay. For correspondence, a few emails, most of which has already been attended to. Alexander Neff had emailed seeking clarification regarding the town beach, based on some things that she had been reading on social media. Todd Selig, who is the Durham administrator, shared with you an op-ed that he had written in depthnewhampshire.org regarding the budget crisis and how a lot of the cost shifting is coming from the state down to municipalities and what the overall impact is. There was an email received from Kelly Delaire regarding the road condition, some road condition concerns, specifically on Stevens Hill Road, and I did provide a response to her on that. If you have any further comment that you would like to provide, I'm happy to share There was an email from Jay Vilchak on April eleventh regarding Nottingham's Town Beach. It was an FYI to a petition that's being circulated, and I believe we're going to address that at the meeting on May fifth. I think that's the next planned discussion on the Town Beach opening. There was an email from Bill Garnett this morning received, looking for the agenda and information on the New Hampshire DOT presentation, to which Nancy had responded. And then, last piece of correspondence received was just an official letter of resignation from Teresa Bascom, resigning from the planning board. That's all I have for my report.
Perfect. Any questions? All right. Thank you very much.
Okay, just on the budget thing, so have we, it's probably still too even, soon to even understand the things that are coming down, like, how much of an impact of cost shifting is coming our way with a tax cap? Have we seen how much is coming yet, or is there still too much, just in, I haven't seen everything move through yet? Okay. Nothing big has?
Nothing that I know that's going to impact 2025.
There we go.
With the exception of some room and meals tax and highway road block, because the state is fiscal year.
Yep.
They start July first, so there could be some impact in the last two quarters of our year, but.
Who knows? Who knows?
There's just so many different, you see the Senate bills and the House bills, and then the conflict, and they go back and forth, and some get tabled for so long, and I'm like, I've tried looking, and I see the reps when they try to tell stuff, but it's, I didn't know if we had gotten anything, like, this is impacting us, okay?
And then, on to the purchase for the new grader. Mr. Rollins, do you want to come up and kind of discuss the three options that we've got presented in front of us, and I guess the pros and cons, and maybe your recommendation? Would you go with some questions?
Do you need reference materials? Do you need reference materials?
I have extra copies.
Other than the actual numbers, no.
Okay.
That's the only reason I needed it.
So of the?
What do you want to know?
So, I guess my question would be, the Komatsu, which you recommended, four sixty-four, right? The Caterpillar with the blade, I think, mid-mount scarifer was three ninety-five, and then the John Deere was three ninety-eight, nine hundred. Why should we go with the more expensive one?
Is there something missing from the other options?
There isn't, there isn't. They're pretty well dressed, similar. The Komatsu does have both, has both controls plus joystick, not a big difference, but the big difference is size of machine. So both the Deere and the Cat are a little bit smaller machines than the Komatsu, simply because they don't make a machine the same size as the Komatsu, and I was pricing the same machine that we have.
Do you think it's important to have a bigger machine?
Excuse me?
Do you think it's important to have a bigger machine? Important to have that bigger machine?
I was just going with the size we had.
Okay, just asking.
It works good. No, there's times that a lot smaller machine would be better, but then, would it be good on our bigger roads? Probably not. So, I mean, I went with that size machine because that's what we had, and it's doing the job just fine. A lighter machine, I don't know, may be able to do the job, but I know this one does.
All right. Well, the Cat, because you have to add the mid-mount scarif- scarifier?
Scarifier.
Scarifier. I have no idea how to pronounce that word.
Well, I have my wheelhouse, too.
That's, that's an additional sixteen thousand dollars that's included in.
Right, that brought the price up to three ninety-five.
It should be on all, all three of them. And then I did a front blade instead of wing setup and plow setup, because we really do not use the grader for plowing and pushing back, like, we don't get that kind of snow anymore, and a front blade would be much more handy when we're building a road, or even fixing a big washout or something like that, you don't climb a boulder pile, you can just push it in, then you grade it out.
And do you know what the warranty is like for the Cat?
They're all one year, I believe.
I thought the Komatsu was two.
Yeah, well, the dealer was gonna extend the warranty an extra year for us.
Okay.
There again, now, my other choice, my other reason for going with the Komatsu versus the other two is the dealer.
I'm sorry, the?
The dealer.
Oh, okay.
It's a family business, and, you know, I don't know, just have very good luck. They served us well last winter. When our grader was down and wasn't shifting from forward to reverse, they gave us a grader to use, and we only paid for it for the hours we used. It sat here all went along, waiting to be used. That's, you know, pretty nice.
Yeah.
You know? If we'd had to rent a machine and had it sitting there and not use it, you know, that, that hurts. Not saying the other two wouldn't have done that had we asked, but I didn't have to ask Komatsu, they just did it, all right? They offered it, you know what I mean?
Are you anticipating any difference in being able to get replacement parts for any of these?
There again.
One easier than the other, as far as you know?
Cat is expensive. You know, when it comes to parts and service and all that, I mean, you're paying for the name. I mean, you are with all of them, but I do believe Komatsu might be a little better. I mean, that, that's another reason.
I just see a lot of new John Deeres out of these construction companies. I didn't know why they were buying John Deere versus Cater.
Yep.
Or Komatsu.
I don't know, I mean, I love a John Deere.
Relying on your expertise.
I love a John Deere bulldozer, the older ones. I absolutely love a John Deere bulldozer, but as far as the grader goes, I don't know, I never really spent a lot of time with one.
Right.
I have spent some time with a Cat, a Galleon, which was bought out by Komatsu, and a Komatsu. So those are the three that I'm really familiar with.
None of them probably could GPS.
Oh, yeah, they do can, oh, yeah.
Is it included in these prices?
No.
No.
We have no reason for it.
No, we're not building, we're not building roads every day.
You can, you can set them up, so you just turn the wheel and hit throttle, and it does it all, all the rest itself. But, yeah, nothing that we're gonna do on our roads with ledge sticking out of them and, you know.
So you said that the John Deere and the Cat are both smaller machines than the Komatsu?
They're lighter, smaller machines.
They're lighter, smaller, so is that, like, the next step down, and then we'd go significantly bigger if we were trying to compare it?
If we're trying to get to the size of ours, it'd be a pretty good jump, I believe.
Okay.
And then, because I saw you sent a follow-up email, too, from, I think, the Cat dealer that said the John Deere was even smaller than the Cat?
Correct, yeah. So what he was saying is they provided a quote, it would need to be compared to the John Deere seven seventy-two GP, which I think the one that was quoted was the six, six seventy-two, which would be the equivalent horsepower and weight of the Caterpillar one forty.
Which they did provide the quote for a six seventy-two.
Did they?
Yep.
The John Deere is a six seventy-two, Caterpillar says six seventy-two is not comparable, it should be the seven seventy-two if you want equivalent horsepower and weight. So while this one here, they're saying this is kind of.
The three ninety-eight, nine hundred isn't comparable to the John Deere. I'm sorry, is not comparable to the?
To the Cat.
Yeah.
So it's even smaller.
Mm-hmm.
Which is what I was saying.
Now, between the three of these, I mean, you, you said some of them might be better for, you know, smaller, we have the bigger roads, but we have a ton of smaller roads, too. Are you still able to use?
Yeah, it's the one, the bigger one, which is the same size as ours, obviously, we're using now.
Right.
So that's, that's why I went.
Which is still, we say bigger, but the Komatsu is?
Bigger out of the three.
Right. It's still a size down from the big John Deere and the big Cat, which are very big.
Right.
Which we don't have quotes on.
Right, right, okay, now I'm good.
We don't need the huge one. Right, no, we're not comparing apples to apples.
So we're staying in the six hundred series, not moving up into the seven hundred series.
Right.
And then, the only other thing I noticed different is they're saying that theirs are quote-unquote six-wheel drive for the Cat, vice just rear-wheel or four-wheel drive on the Komatsu, and then it's six-wheel for the John Deere.
There again, we're not plowing with it anymore.
And it's probably more maintenance, too.
That, that too, possibly, but we're getting by with what we have with rear-wheel drive all the way, which is four wheels in the back.
Yeah.
And we did actually plow with that one.
I mean, it's pretty heavy and slow, but it'll move.
Exactly. I think maybe the weight makes up for the extra drive, you know what I mean? I don't know.
And the relative services, so if you look at a thousand-hour service between a Komatsu or a Cat or a John Deere, are, are they all roughly the same, or is it like, oh, these guys come in at a ten thousand?
You're saying number of hours to an oil change or whatever.
Or the cost. Does one guy have a six thousand dollar, thousand-hour service, and the other one's a twenty thousand dollar, thousand-hour service, because they have, I'm looking at long?
Caterpillar shocked me on the last service on the loader. We'll be doing it in-house from now on.
It's really high?
It was really high, in my opinion.
And that's what I'm just looking at long-term, right? We should be looking at twenty years here.
And we actually had talked to the dealer for the Komatsu about coming in and only doing certain services for us, and they were fine with that and letting us do the rest in-house, just to save money for the town.
Okay.
So it was things like that that, that looked like they were good options for me for saving the money, you know, saving some money that we could.
And what was the timeframe for arrival to us if we were to order?
If I remember correctly, we were like two months for all of them. I believe so. Don't quote me, though, because originally, when we were talking to doing this, it was back in January?
December.
And then all of a sudden, it got stopped.
Right.
So what has happened since then, I really can't testify to.
Yeah.
But I know the Komatsu one, we're still looking at around two months, but that's the only one I've been really kind of following up on because it was the same size as ours.
Makes sense.
The crew themselves, you know, they don't care. I'm looking at it in, you know, long-term and money savings overall.
Now, and I agree that them all has been very generous this past year with giving us or loaning us the grader one, only, and charging us only when we use it.
Right.
They were good to us.
Yeah.
And coming out and doing repairs, they came out and, you know, helped us diagnose what the problem was with the other grader, when it wouldn't go forward and reverse. And then, actually, the option then was junk the grader because Komatsu didn't offer the shifter or, or anything to it, but they had a place in, I don't know, Texas, or I don't know, somewhere that could rebuild it for us. You know, so it's that kind of stuff that means something to me.
All right, so what do we need? And the Komatsu came with a front, front blade?
What's that?
Komatsu came with a front blade?
Yep.
Does the Cat one?
When I asked for the quote, they were all supposed to.
Yeah, I think.
So I wanted to try to keep all the same, the only thing is, I couldn't keep the size the same because what's offered is what's offered.
Looks like the Cat was adding fifty-six thousand for the front plow harness.
Right.
But it also included a wing, which we don't need the wing.
No.
Or the wing box.
No, and I told them I didn't want any, any snowplow gear on this machine. I wanted strobe light package, you know, the light package, because we still need that for safety.
Right.
And I wanted a front blade for pushing dirt, not a snowplow.
Right, right.
Right. And if it came down to it, honestly, we have all that off the other grader that we could retrofit to fit this machine, but I don't know why we'd ever would.
Any other questions? I think we just need a motion to move forward with the purchase, purchase of the Komatsu.
All right, I'll make a motion to move forward with the purchase of the Komatsu grader.
At a price of?
Okay, at a price of, what was the price?
Four hundred and sixty-four thousand.
At a price of four hundred and sixty-four thousand.
And I'll second that motion.
With a motion and a second? All in favor?
First page.
All in favor, say aye, please. Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Rollins, appreciate it.
Thank you, Steve.
Hey, I have a quick unrelated question for you.
Yes.
So I was over at Marston on Saturday helping with cleanup.
Lot of sand in the parking lot.
Yeah, what happened? Was that dumped, or was that runoff?
I think at one point, that's as far as they could push when they plowed.
Oh, okay.
And they, and it melted out of the snowbank, I think.
Okay.
Possibly somebody left this spreader on, I don't know.
It's down a hill, so it almost looked like it couldn't runoff, but I'm sure.
It is gonna be cleaned up.
Okay, that was my next question.
It's on the list, we're just.
It's very slippery.
Well, I mean, actually, it was scheduled to be swept, and then we got another snowstorm
All in favor, say aye please. Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Rollins, appreciate it. Hey, I have a quick unrelated question for you.
Yes.
So I was over at Marston on Saturday helping with cleanup.
Lot of sand in the parking lot.
Yeah, what happened? Was that dumped, or was that runoff?
I think at one point, that's as far as they could push when they plowed.
Oh, okay.
And they, and it melted out of the snowbank, I think.
Okay.
Possibly somebody left this bed on. I don't know.
It's down a hill, so it almost looks like it couldn't run off, but I'm sure...
It is going to be cleaned up.
Okay, that was my next question. Thank you.
It's on the list, which is...
It's very slippery.
Well, I mean, actually, it was scheduled to be swept, and then we got another snowstorm.
Okay.
So now I gotta put, now I gotta put it back on the schedule.
Thank you.
There's no doubt we need a sweep and a cleanup of parking lots.
Yeah, we all do.
Believe so.
Is everything going good with the current graders working?
Actually, it's doing quite well. It's doing well. The shifter's shifting nice. We got the heat working, so it's, you know, not damp in there. The roof's not leaking anymore. The mice have been evicted. Yeah, a lot of stuffs.
Just for an update, where are you at with the road grading, dirt roads and the road grading? Just so that people can hear.
Today, we finished Berry and South Summer. Tomorrow, we'll be on Ledge Farm. We already did Poor Farm.
I thought Ledge Farm was done a couple weeks ago, or does it need to be done again?
Did I say Ledge?
Yeah. Oh, Poor Farm.
Oh, sorry. Yes, we did Ledge Farm.
Okay.
We're doing Poor Farm tomorrow.
Okay.
Did I reverse them?
You said you were doing Ledge Farm, and I was like...
I reversed them. Sorry.
Wouldn't hurt to do Ledge Farm again.
Oh, yeah, I know. I can...
No, I know, but if he's got to drive by.
But Ledge Farm gets a lot of traffic.
Yes.
Does get a lot of traffic. I mean, you can do it, and that evening, it's already getting potholes again.
And you did Stevens Hill.
Stevens Hill, that takes three days to do Stevens Hill. You do the first piece, then the middle piece up to the power lines, then the power lines up to Deerfield. I mean, it's three days, I mean, it's three days worth of work just to do that one road. You know, what we did today, Berry and South Summer, it was two men. And that, and, you know, it mixed for a long day to do those two roads. Ledge Farm's a full day to grade, well, first you gotta rake the leaves off, then you gotta grade it, then you gotta rake it, then you gotta roll it, you know, so you're there, you're there a whole day. So pretty much each one of these roads and then each one of the lake roads, to be politically correct, are, you know, a day plus because of the spurs off of them. So it honestly takes us about six weeks to do the whole town grading.
So when do you think you'd be getting down to the lakeside?
Well, we bend down there with the tobacco on the worst, just on the worst of them, and just filling in some of the big holes. And that's what we did last year to try to keep them passable until the grader got there. And we'll be there again. I just have to work around, because I need the loader to load material, so we have to use the tobacco. The tobacco's used by the transfer recycling center on Mondays. So that gives us Monday afternoon when they're done with it, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. So, and then in between other projects, so, you know.
And then you heard the feedback tonight about Mendel.
And last year, I took 90 loads of ditch material off of Raymond's side. 90 loads. That's a lot of ditching. That technically, I guess I shouldn't have done.
Well, again, I think we know that it's private road, and we need to figure that out. But I guess for now, though, it is probably, it is, I mean, I haven't been down them all, but I would say the worst.
Yeah, it was pretty bad.
We did one ton loads, because we use little trucks.
But I mean, the potholes in there right now.
It would make them very happy.
I think you could name some of them canyons.
Yeah, yeah, it was pretty potholly.
So you want to fix them tomorrow?
I was just...
That's all I need, is just a word. Just tell me to go fix them, I will.
Ellen, and working out your priorities, but I would, I would say if you take a drive down...
Oh, I've driven down it. I just don't know if I should be fixing them or not, with the lawyer and all that. I don't... I mean, I know, I know nothing. Tell me what to do.
I'm nobody, but I say yes.
I think tonight we...
If you can make it passable, whatever, keep it, keep it decent, you know, because it's not only for our residents, it's also for our PD, fire, safety, all that stuff.
I agree. I mean, I've done, on, yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
I don't want to take up all your time.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Rollins.
Thank you.
Take care. Thanks.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
All right, on to assessing.
I'll make a motion to approve the application for elderly exemption for map 40 lot 9, map 63 lot 44, and map 72 lot 10.
I'll second. You can take it.
You did it. Motion and a second? All in favor? Motion carries.
And how about a motion to accept the land use change tax on map 6 lot 22 and map 6 lot 22-3?
Second.
Motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. And then action items from last meeting. It's just sitting there. Raymond Road's still not done, although the mailbox got taken out last weekend. So, and then Stevens Hill Road, we're going to be, we already talked about moving that to a public hearing.
Correct. That's good.
So, I guess I'm asked for approval to spend money out of the Nottingham, Celebrate Nottingham Fund for our REV 250 event coming up this weekend. We've offered to pay the REV groups $200 a group that comes out and participates. Got some porta-potties that we need to come in, a wreath. So it'll be minimal amount of money, so looking for an approval from the board to expend that money out of that fund.
How much money?
Much tops.
200 plus porta-potties.
Well, there's five groups, so no more than $2,000 out of that 45,000 we get in that. Probably less than that.
So up to a maximum of?
Right.
So, all right, a motion to expend...
Just to expend the money to do the event.
You said 4,000?
2,000.
2,000, sorry. 2,000, oh, there's 4,000 in it.
45,000. 45, yeah.
So I'll make a motion to spend up to $2,000 from the, what you call it? Celebrate Nottingham.
Nottingham.
Trust fund.
Trust fund. What else did I miss?
For the...
For the, okay, for the...
Reenactment.
Reenactment on April 26th?
Yep.
Motion? All second. And a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So here's one other thing.
Oh, come on, Steve.
We're on a roll. Just public opinion. On first night out, we're looking to do a fireworks display. So to expend more money out of that fund, a total of probably $10,000.
National.
$10,000.
National Night Out, August 5th.
I thought you said there wasn't that much money.
45,000.
Oh, oh, sorry.
And you'd be, would you be doing that here on the ball fields, or?
Yeah, we'll be doing it on the ball field up here.
That's what they did when we did two years ago.
Yep.
I missed that.
And it was probably...
At the hamburger.
People enjoyed that event.
And it's still a concert that night, too?
There's still a concert, there's, I think, Woodman.
Yeah, we already advertised it, Steve, I can't believe you didn't have it.
Yeah.
Big forgiveness later, right?
Burn all that money up. Just burn it up.
Be a lot of fun.
It's a great, I mean, two years ago, it was, it was a huge turnout. I know the election, we had a special election.
I'm not making a motion for fireworks. It's like burning money. It is exactly the purpose that we...
To celebrate.
So I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion on my own motion. To expend the $10,000 for the...
From the?
From the Celebrate Nottingham.
Trust fund.
Trust fund.
To be used for?
To be used for, to be used for the purpose of fireworks.
At National Night Out.
In the amount of $10,000 on National Night Out, August 5th.
We've got a motion.
Up to $10,000?
Very long for a second.
Where it's definitely $10,000.
$10,000. Let's do a fireworks show. If you want to stand around and sparklers, then we can do it for, for a hundred bucks.
And everybody gets burned.
Then burn each other.
Yeah.
We don't need brandings.
Any other further discussion on the motion?
Can we get a second?
Not yet. Got a motion and a second? All in favor?
Sure, I guess.
Aye.
Burn it up.
What else you got, Steve?
That's it. I'm sure I'll have more before we're done.
You're on a roll.
You gotta expend that money.
No, you don't have to.
What are you gonna do with it?
Save it for another 50 years.
We can do that too. 25, to be exact.
At our next meeting, we're also going to be reviewing the roadside mowing proposals.
Correct. Those are advertised with a due date of April 30th, so next Wednesday. It's advertised on the website, on New Hampshire Municipal Association, and roadside mowing. Roadside mowing. Proposals to do the entire town in 2025.
Have we got any bites for the beach town?
Negative. But that one also closes on April 30th.
All right. And now we'll open up to public comment.
Steven Surratt, 32 Dowellstam Road. And I'm here, first of all, to compliment the board, many of them who showed up for the Nottingham Community Cleanup Day. It was, from my point of view, a remarkable success. It was just, it really represents the best of Nottingham. People giving back to the town to make it beautiful. And there were three focuses. The Town Hall, the Community Center, which is beautified and continue that way. Then the library, it's really looking sharper. And then out in Marston. And the dugouts look really cool, by the way.
Yeah, they did a great job.
They really, I mean, I can't believe all those machines were out there cutting that stuff. Really, to make them beautiful makes a lot of work. Okay, that's door number one. Door number two is I'm going to echo what Steve Welsh talked about. And invite you all on April 26th at 9 o'clock, we are going to gather at Nottingham Square. And it's an incredible event. Have you followed anything that's going on in Massachusetts? They went nuts. And as they should have. 250 years from the Battle of Lexington and Concord. And many people think that that was, in fact, the beginning of the American Revolution. In fact, what was interesting is everyone remembers Paul Revere's Ride, right? Don't forget that the dismembered for that, Paul Revere came to Portsmouth, New Hampshire, and led the food, and got the rebels so, rebels so excited that they took Fort William and Mary right here in New Hampshire, even before the Battle of Lexington and Concord. That, to me, also was the beginning of the American Revolution. So I just urge you all to come, bring your families. It's going to be a fun thing. There were five different militias from around New England. There's a person who's going to be riding up on a horse, like they did, and said, the redcoats are coming, or the regulars are coming from Massachusetts, yes. And we didn't, and they, because it was tax-free, that's why they were coming. So that's, and that's door number two. And door number three, I knew it, I'll be on, all right, okay, no. On April 27th, that, the Sunday after the alarm ride, is at the old Town Hall, the annual Pie Social from the Norman Historical Society. Terrific examples of really neat pies, coffee. It's kind of just a neat community event, so that's also, I just wanted to publicize that.
Thank you, Mr. Surratt.
Now again, the big event getting up.
What's that?
Hi, I'm Robin Marshall, 189 Old Temple Road, where that development showed it, where that roundabout or right over. So I wanted to come while it was quiet, because I don't like a lot of turmoil or craziness, so I didn't really, and I didn't know if I was going to be able to make it next week, but I wanted to give some information to Ellen. Because the town beach is very dear to my heart. So if I go back to last year, when the town beach, you guys finally made the announcement, we all cheered for you for opening the town beach, although it was a month late, we were excited to at least get two months of the town beach instead of our usual three. But I came here because it's very passionate to me, and you guys texted us for the year to be good stewards. You all asked. Well, may not have been all you, because some of you are new, but you asked us to be good stewards of the beach. While we were there, to kind of like, just do our best to try to keep it being safe for the community and to just try to weed out people that shouldn't be there or things. So I took it to heart, because I really do enjoy the beach. And I did, I did my best. And you, you said that, you know, you didn't want any shenanigans going on to there. And then you reported in July 15th, according to the minutes, that several of you, I don't know exactly who you were, but it was noted in the minutes that several of you had gone down to the town beach from time to time and had no report of any shenanigans going on. So that was, that was great. I used the beach all summer. I used it with my daughter, grandkids. I did see the police come through and monitor one time and question my daughter, because she's not a town resident. And I just waved, because I live at the lake in there, and he's, they said it was two of them, they said it was fine. I didn't see any smoking, any vaping, I saw no alcohol. I saw no shenanigans myself going on. It was just mostly young families, people with their children or grandchildren. And the only time I found it when I was there by myself, which I did enjoy, was during the week while school was kind of still... I don't know if it was like, it must have been during like a Monday or something, maybe people were working. But I enjoyed the serene quiet of 10 o'clock in the morning, it's noon time with nobody there but myself, just enjoying the beach. There were three things the whole summer that I found. I found one aluminum can that had, I don't know if it fell out, it was on the path by the porta-potties. So I just picked it up. It wasn't a beer can, it wasn't an alcohol, I think it was an energy drink. And I just picked it on, because the rule is carry and carry out. So whether it was mine or not, I didn't really care. Be a good steward, I picked it up and took it with me. And I did recycle it, just so you know, because although it's mandatory recycling in Nottingham, it's not mandatory in this town office. But I do my best to recycle when I can, even, even for the town. The second thing, I was leaving one day, and it was later on in the afternoon during the week, and a truck pulled in and it had a dog in, and it was at the beach parking lot, it wasn't by the gate. So I was pulling in my car, and the guy, and it was his older daughter who was home from college. The dog never made it out of the truck. And I said, "Did you see the sign at the gate?" I said, "No dogs allowed." And they're like, "Oh, we didn't even, we didn't even see the sign on the gate." I'm like, I can't miss it. So I said, "Well, you know there's no dogs allowed on the beach." And they're like, "Oh," they're like, "Really? We, in the past, there was. I never remember there being dogs allowed on the beach." And I said, "But I do believe that down at the boat launch, they do allow pets. I'm not sure. I think they do." And they said, "Oh, no problem." So they got in the truck. They knew where it was, because they, the dad lived in town, but she, they knew where it was and they left. And I think they took the dog down there. So there was one of that. And then there was one weekend, which I think I reported before the board before, that when I was at the beach, there were already some paddle boards on the beach. Like, the beach was never really that busy, because like, there's not 30 kids in the water, so it wasn't really a big to-do. However, these people, I asked if they were town residents, because again, doing my good stewardness, I can be really nice, so I don't, I'm not like confrontational. But I said, "Hey, do you guys live in town?" And they're like, "No." And I'm like, "Oh, great." But they were actually camping at Pawtucket Way. And so they don't see any signs. And you guys, I know I brought it here, because you guys actually moved the rules from the side of the shed to the front. And so they did leave, but they had no idea. They were just paddling by and thought it was a nice place to swim and just stopped by. So some of the violations are happening, because people aren't aware. And they left. I did, I did my due diligence again. And so move on to last, when I stated that the town might end up closing due to disrespectful residents or non-residents. And that came from the Board of Selectmen, where it's my name and Ellen, I can leave this all with you. I highlighted some, some things here that I mentioned that Ms. Marshall, this is from the minutes of the 715 2024 meeting. Concerned that the beach ends up closing due to disrespectful residents or non-residents, and felt time that transgressors possibly could be fined. A number of board members had checked the beach area from time to time. They didn't find any shenanigans. And so I said, "If it's the people that are causing them, or maybe non-residents, maybe we could do something like Tamworth did..." And so I said, "If it's the people that are causing them, or maybe non-residents, maybe we could do something like Tamworth did." And so I actually pulled, 'cause I know you guys are so busy, you don't get paid for what you do, you know, like, a lot. I think you could get paid something, but still, anyone in politics doesn't get paid enough. So I pulled the Tamworth, 'cause it's Chakora Lake, and they have a public side and they have a non-resident-only. And on the actual beach, they have, so people are coming, like, from the lake, they can see, oh, that part of the beach is for non-residents only. So I pulled, they do, they don't charge initially for two stickers a year, but they do charge for replacements and additional stickers. And then I put the rules of their beach, and I'll, I'll give that to Ellen as well, that, if you guys want to review it, just 'cause I didn't want to make the meeting next, next time. So, um, so they charge fifty dollars if they're, if they're found using, it's the Town of Tamworth, and it's Chakora Lake. It's a resident-only beach, so if they do find someone, they find them fifty dollars, which I think it would be great. I know, I don't know if it was last year, twenty twenty-three, it was reported, the police had two calls for, or maybe Tim at Ju, who had to let people out of, I think it was the police, to let people out, and both of those people were non-residents. So if we had charged them fifty dollars, it appears, that's a hundred dollars. And now with the new, if we get someone, the new monitor, I mean, it can help defer the cost of that, and then it would deter them. If I got charged fifty dollars, I'd think twice about breaking the rule again. So I think, because there's no really circumstance, except to close the beach, which would hurt everybody, that that would target just those people who are abusing the system and, or using the road or whatever. I'm just going using the beach, but there's other violations for non-residents. I mean, if they bring a dog, you can also find them as well, as long as it's posted somewhere in the rules. And then I listened, I was made aware, because I know how passionate I'm of the beach, of last, the April seventh twenty twenty-five. So I did listen to it, because they're like, "Hey, did you know the town's, again, another year later, I thought we had the insurance all figured out for the access road and everything." "What do you mean they're thinking about closing it again?" So they said, "No, no, no, go listen to the Board of Selectmen." So I did. And once again, you know, you guys are here saying, "Well, you know, do we open it? And do, don't we open it?" With the uncertainty each year, I understand why the rec department is just frustrated, because they can't really plan in advance, because they never know if you guys are gonna allow it to be opened.
That's not true. The rec does not want to use that.
Right.
Courtney does not want to use the town beach.
At all.
It was the rec department that recommended keeping it closed.
I, well, I did see her letter, I, I know, Ellen, you read it, no, I think it was Tim wrote the letter, actually, 'cause when I listened to it...
Yeah, she has, it's, that's not, like, the reason she's not down there isn't because we made a decision last year, potentially, that has nothing to do with it. You can ask her if you'd like, but...
Uh, okay. But I know in the past, she's been, you know, frustrated about, she couldn't get lifeguards, because she, you guys hadn't made the decision, and it's not your fault, you know, you gotta take a lot in to make decisions. So I was just going by, basically, that with her frustration. So I had some concerns myself, in the, based off that hearing, well, not hearing, but the, the last town meeting, Board of Selectmen meeting, that there was no address located for that. It used to be called Beach Road or something, but I think they took it down, it was private. I think it was Beach Road, and then they took it off Google Maps, 'cause people were doing Nottingham Beach, 'cause of Patuckaway, and they were finding that road, so I think that stopped some of the people from finding it. But if there was a nine-one-one call, like, say I'm at the beach, and something happened to my grandkids, I call nine-one-one. I have no street address to give them, so I just say the town beach, like, so that was, like, what do you do? Because the, well, I don't know, if it was you, Ellen, had asked the police department, and there was like, well, we could only pull the query from Flutter Street and Deerfield Street. But wouldn't it be an easy thing like the town beach? Like, wouldn't that be a location if there's no road to... I don't know what I would say on nine-one-one. I'm at the end of Flutter Street, somewhat up Deerfield Road, or do you just call it the town beach? So I think there's some, I don't know.
Do, do you get cell service there? Because we often don't.
Yeah.
Oh.
Maybe in the past, I know Courtney had told me that in the past, or it was Bridget had told me in the past that they couldn't get nine-one-one, they had to drive all the way out to the gate. But yeah, 'cause I would tell my daughter when I was there or when I was leaving, so you do get cell service there. I think the towers are improved.
I think it depends on which company you were.
Perhaps so, yeah, 'cause we...
I have T-Mobile, so I get service there, so... So, and then it had stated in that same meeting that the calls that were received could have been trespassing calls, but they couldn't confirm it, which was, you know, it was hard. And then Mr. Decker made a good point, saying that the calls, if it's trespass, it may not end whether the beach is open or not, which I think is true, a lot of it, I think, happens when the, the gates closed, or in winter. And I don't know how you make more people aware of it, that it's not a trail, you know, to be used. Like, the other trails, plenty of other trails in Nottingham that you can use, why are you using the beach trail, but whatever? And Mr. Daubert, you stated that, and this again, isn't that meeting, last meeting, that foot or bike traffic is not allowed on that access road to the town beach? And that was new to me. I'm like, I see people ride their bikes, you know, if they're a young kid, they ride their bikes to the beach, they're not... So that, I was just wondering if that was really true, or if that was just something you made in another reference, 'cause I wasn't at the meeting, I just listened to it.
I think that's one of the pieces that we had come to an agreement last year to open it up, was to, because of the...
Not on the rules, that, that there's no foot...
Well, 'cause the rules are for the beach itself.
I have those rules, and it's not anywhere...
They're not for the access.
But the access trail is not the beach, the access trail is on private property.
But there's nothing that says it's foot traffic or bike...
On the, on the sign?
On the sign, and anywhere, on the town rules, so...
It wasn't the sign.
Little kids ride their bikes to that...
Talking about that specifically last year.
It wasn't in the minutes, 'cause I went in the morning, I pulled everything.
I think that would be something we would need to work out with the Farnolds.
So I know you're having a meeting, so it's something that you might want to figure out before the next meeting. I mean, how do you tell kids they can't ride?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that if it's okay with Farnolds to allow that...
I can see four-wheelers and things like that, but...
But again, we have, so the, the thing that you're saying, as far as every year, we, we agreed last year in order to use the private property that's there...
Oh, with the landowner?
With the landowner.
Well, what if, like, is that just not, like, during the time the beach is open, can someone ride a bicycle down that road?
We'll, we'll have to review the agreement.
If the beach is not open, if the beach is not open, you can't use the trail.
I agree.
Right.
When it was open, I think that was one of their pieces that they wanted to limit, because they were afraid, again, they're afraid of their personal liability, 'cause that's their property.
But the town has insurance now, to cover that.
It's a one million dollar policy.
So it should cover anything, if someone falls on their bike, but I can see...
Or gets hit by a car.
There's actually a recreation immunity statute that the town has covered on, because we don't assess a fee to use the town beach. If we get into the fee charge, then that's a whole nother conversation.
Yeah.
You can charge for parking.
There's just something picked up on the meal.
Do you have anything else?
Yes.
Okay.
So, and, and Charlotte, you had mentioned that you drove down a few times and saw out-of-state plates, there are people without out-of-state plates. But then, like, two sentences later, you said the beach wasn't being used, so that was kind of confusing to me, and again, I wasn't at the meeting, so...
Well, I didn't say it wasn't being used, 'cause I was there.
You did, because I took it right from, yeah, go back in fifty-five minutes into, you'll hear yourself.
I said it wasn't used very often.
Um, you said it wasn't being used, yeah, very, not at all, but very used, so if, you know, it was confusing to me. Um, and that, where many calls were made, but yet they couldn't be confirmed where they were related to the town beach or not. So, um, so with the new seasonal town beach attendant, I think it's a great employment opportunity for someone wanting some summer income. It has to be eighteen and older, so it can't be like, I guess, an older high school kid. My concerns, and it worries me, Ellen, and I heard you say that there were no applicants submitted yet, that if there, if anyone found, are they just, is it just gonna be the town, the beach isn't gonna be open? That was one thing that I was wondering. And then, because they do pay someone, much like the newsletter, if all of a sudden, it's a quick and easy budget cut, and then because we can't pay for the cost of the attendant, the beach isn't open. So those are, both of those might result in the town beach being not open or closed. And with the applicant, so I pulled the application for the town...
So Robin?
Yes.
We, public comment is typically like three to five minutes. We, we do have, and we do have other stuff to get into, non-public.
Oh, I thought you were like, you were done for...
No, no, we still have, that's what, yeah.
So I, and I can really try to make it, I don't, my babysitting schedule's kind of crazy. Is there, um, so I did, I'll just really hurry up to submit to Ellen, I did a, and I can give you all this, Ellen highlighted everything. I did a online petition, I just didn't sleep four o'clock in the morning, I said, "I don't even know how to do this, I'm trying." So change.org, I started one, and I have a list of a hundred and thirty-nine Nottingham residents. It was two hundred and forty-nine total signatures, some of those were out of town, Northwood or out of state. So I only pulled the Nottingham, which I can give you, to you guys as well. And also some comments that people wrote, like, my kids and I spend every day, of my concern was, if people didn't, you didn't think the beach was being used at all. So I wanted to say, there's quite a few people that are using the beach. And also the petition itself to go with it, 'cause I don't know how, 'cause I'm not a petition, how you submit it to you as a board to... So I have that here as well, so I don't know if you can get on an agenda to talk about the beach, and maybe I can bring this up.
We do have copies of this, don't we?
Yes, it was sent to us by another email...
We do have copies of it, thank you.
But I, I can just, so how do I get on, like, to...
Just contact me the Thursday prior to the meeting. I, I mean, this is a planned discussion for May fifth, we figured we'd talk about what, if, if we did receive any applicants for the beach attendant position, and then continue the discussion for May fifth, so that is a planned topic.
So should I make an appointment and be able to speak to this on...
Well, it's gonna be on our agenda, so...
Okay. So you only have like three to five minutes to talk?
Well, the public comment at the end, but we'll be talking about it.
Well, I want to leave you with...
But we gotta limit the time, you can't go on for hours.
Yeah, I understand. But I do want to, like, limit it to one thing, 'cause I know ultimately you guys will that, make that decision. It's on my last page. So I know, like, the lake residents on Patuckaway and Northwood River have access to a lake anytime they want, because they live on it. But being, having the town beach, it's nice to those who don't live on the lake, one of those two lakes, to be able to enjoy one. So I wanted to end, um, wondering if the monitor, we have one for the beach, do we have a monitor for anyone else in town? Like, is any of the trails monitored, are any of the town property monitored? 'Cause the rules say the police will monitor the town beach. And they did last year, 'cause they came out, I was there when they monitored it. So I just was like, why do we have to pay someone to monitor? Already rules say the police are monitoring it, it was confusing to me. But I know we have the new no smoking rule, so I want to leave it with this. So if someone's caught smoking or vaping at one of the ball fields, whether it's Maston here, do you cancel baseball for the entire season for everyone? I just want to leave on that. And I'll try to make this clear to the community, do you want any of this, or you have a petition?
We, we do have a copy of the petition.
'Cause I printed the signatures that go with it.
Okay, that would be great.
Which you probably weren't able to do, and the comments. Thank you.
Thank you, that's okay.
I'm sorry, I'm learning.
Any more public comment?
Thank you.
Well, we do have non-public to go into.
Can I just say one thing? I'm, I'm just hoping the chief will be here next week, or, May fifth, to talk about, a little bit about the shenanigans that you may have responded to last summer.
At the town beach.
I mean, sure, I have spoken a lot about it, many meetings, and I'm requested to be here to speak again, I am.
Can I just quote you then? You can't be here. My understanding was like between twenty-two and twenty-four?
I mean, yeah, but like you said, that we don't, there's not an address.
You don't have an address, right?
But if you call nine-one-one, you can never knock me into that.
There's only one town beach.
Yeah.
The other one's state.
Yeah.
So they should be able to do that.
Should there be an address, I guess, maybe?
Yeah, that's a, you know, good question.
I think, I think there is an address.
Yeah. There probably is technically an address.
But whether or not it's official in the database. And there is no road frontage.
Is there anything else? All right, at this point, I'm gonna make a motion, move into non-public for RSA ninety-one dash A colon three two A, D, and L.
I'll second.
Motion and a second, roll call vote.
Aye, Steve Welsh.
Aye, John Decker.
Aye, Tim Debrio.
Aye, Matt Schrelin.
Aye, Charlotte Feif.
So we'll be moving into non-public. After non-public, we'll reopen the public meeting and then adjourn for the evening. Thank you, Nottingham. Have a great week.